I will explain the ways that you can provide public comment during our virtual meeting. First, you can comment in writing. Anything submitted has been forwarded to council and will be included in the formal meeting minutes. Another way to provide comment this evening is to type your question or comment in the Ask a Question in the sidebar box on your screen. The third way to provide comment during these virtual meetings is to type in the Ask a Question box your name and phone number and ask to be connected to council, and you will provide your comment over the phone to us during our virtual meeting. So again, those are three ways. We are going to wait a few minutes to start our meeting this evening, again, to allow time for folks to join virtually. I'll be making the announcement again, but I will share that this as well as we're waiting. We do have a little bit of time left. Council is going to be moving back to our council chambers and no longer conducting hybrid meetings as of May 18th. So we look forward to getting together, joining together in our old council chambers, and we look forward to welcoming our guests back there as well. We will make sure to be following any public health order as we resume those meetings there in person. So again, we've got about, oh, about a minute to go, and we will be starting. So just bear with us for another one more minute. Last time this is happening too, so a bunch of last times. I also should comment while I have a minute to go on. We really want to appreciate, say, our gratitude and appreciation to the staff of the Lone Tree Arts Center. It's been our home away from home during the pandemic. They've done a phenomenal job of bringing these virtual meetings together, instructing council, instructing our other staff members, and really making these meetings accessible to the public as we've struggled through the conditions of COVID-19, keeping everybody safe. So they have been in here doing the hard work. They are, they can't wait to resume their, back to their old jobs, and we're really excited about the season that's going to be presented at the Lone Tree Arts Center. So they're going to turn their attention away from making council look good to presenting wonderful programming for our residents and guests that visit us. So thanks to the awesome Lone Tree Arts Center, and we are hitting the 7:03. So again, I will formally open our meeting, and again, this is the May 4th, 2021 Lone Tree City Council meeting. So you may notice, again, things look a little bit different this time. We are adjusting our practices to comply with the recently released State Public Health Order 20-38, which eliminates social distancing requirements and capacity limitations in most venues to include this meeting. For the time being, we are conducting a hybrid meeting one last time this evening. Also, in accordance with Executive Order D-2021-095, which was revised May 2nd of 2021, we will be conducting this meeting without face coverings, as we have verified that 80% of our participants have been fully vaccinated. Anyone is welcome to wear a face mask if they choose to do so, however. And again, as I mentioned in our preview comments, starting May 18th, 2021, city council meetings will return to the Lone Tree Civic Center at 8527 Lone Tree Parkway, where we will return, return to our pre-COVID meeting procedures. We will continue to follow all applicable state public health orders for safety of everyone in attendance and record all of our public hearings and land use applications for anyone not in attendance. Starting May 18th, the way you will be providing public comment is ahead of time, written comment, and be provided to our city clerk, Mr. Jay Robb, and that will be forwarded and included in our meeting minutes, or also you can show up at our council meetings, which we would love, and provide your comment then. So this evening, however, we are still doing comment via phone or via type in comment in the Ask a Question box. Any comments that were submitted ahead of this meeting have been included in the meeting packet given to council and will be in the formal meeting minutes. Again, please type in the Ask a Question box your name and number if you would like to provide comment that way this evening, or just type in your comment in the Ask a Question box. It will be then forwarded to council and included in our formal meeting minutes. So we are open, and all council members are present. I will ask you all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his law, with liberty and justice for
There are no amendments to our agenda this evening. It is adopted as published. Are there any conflicts of interest from council?
None here.
Glad to hear it. I have been notified by our city clerk that we do have folks that would like to speak to us via phone this evening for public comment. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jay Robb, our city clerk, to begin that process. As always, we would like to remind those providing comments to limit their comments to three minutes, just like when you're in front of us in person. Thanks. Go ahead, Jay.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm calling first.
Hello.
Hello, Jamie.
Hi.
This is the City of Lone Tree calling you tonight for your public comments. Go ahead and state your name. State whether or not you're a Lone Tree resident, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Sure, no problem. My name is Jamie Clennan. I'm a Lone Tree resident for about 10 years now, and I am an animal advocate. I work with the Humane Society of Colorado, the state council member, and I have a nonprofit that helps rescues and shelters. So I guess you could say that I love animals and I work heavily with animal welfare. So naturally, I partnered with Carol and Jill about the Lone Tree breed restriction ban, and I support it 100%. And I assume that all of you have read over materials that we've given you, have heard comments from different residents and business owners all over Lone Tree that support this as well. And I just want to say that I appreciate all the time and effort you have taken into listening and considering this. And I just hope, as an animal lover myself, I'm assuming some of you maybe, or if not all of you, and I hope that you are leaning towards the repeal, so we can give these dogs a chance at a normal life like any other dog, and that we focus more on the dog and not just the breed themselves. So I just wanted to encourage all of you to repeal the ban like other cities have and help Lone Tree grow as a community with animals and people that want to move here. So I just hope that I know you're thinking about it, but sooner than later, that you guys make a decision.
Thank you. Thank you very much for reaching out and for your thoughtful comments this evening. We appreciate it. Jay, is there, is there anybody else? Oh, thank you, Jamie. Is there anybody else?
Sorry. Can only call one person at a time.
You can only, really, Jay?
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Wow. Wow.
What happened to the party line?
Yeah. Council's a little giddy because we are looking forward to actually having you folks back in our council chambers and having this face-to-face communication with you, which you think is much more effective.
Hi, this is Carol.
Hey, Carol. City of Lone Tree calling you tonight for your public comments. Go ahead and state your name for the record and whether or not you're a Lone Tree resident, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, Jay. Hi, this is Carol Sorensen. I'm a longtime resident, and I know you all, and I'm calling tonight to, on behalf of the Lone Tree Sustainability Team, to remind everyone that we've got our next trash pickup event on May 15th, which is a week from Saturday, a meeting at Manic Temple Fairways Park. And I'd like to invite all members of council and anything else from the public that's attending the meeting tonight to join us. You can register on our site at sustainlp.com, so we make sure that we have enough donuts for everyone. We appreciate you joining us and helping us pick up trash in our city. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carol, for your comment, and thanks for helping to make our city even better. Appreciate it. And do we have another person, Jay? I know you're
Yes, we do.
All right.
Just one more.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I get an error on this, on this number. Let me try one. There we go.
Hi, this is
Hello, Jill. This is the City of Lone Tree calling you tonight for your public comments. Go ahead and enter your name.
Hi, Jill. Thank you very much.
Sure. Go ahead and enter your name. Just for the record, enter your name and whether or not you're a Lone Tree resident, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Certainly. My name is Jill Potter. I am a Lone Tree resident living up in Bluffmont. I wanted to say good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. It has been nearly a month since the City of Lone Tree hosted a forum regarding dog behavior-specific legislation. I encourage the city council to take this subject to a work session and make a decision about overturning our current breed legislation. In the meantime, I would like to share a letter, an additional letter in support from Lone Tree resident Meredith Pladdle. Dear city council members, I'm writing you today regarding the Lone Tree citywide ban on pit bulls. I've been a resident of Lone Tree for 10 years and have been an active animal rescue volunteer since 2008. I've handled every type of breed of dog, both in a shelter environment and in our home, when we would foster. Each and every pit bull I met was loving, sweet, and affectionate. I have never been, I have been given many opportunities to work with dog trainers, both through animal shelters and privately with my own dogs. Each breed of dog has their own unique set of challenges and personalities, just as with humans. There is no evidence that breed-specific legislation makes communities safer, either for people or animals. Breed-specific bans come with many negative side effects, such as isolation, lack of socialization for the dogs, lack of exercise, and neglecting medical care. I think the most important thing we can do is recognize a dog's behavior and focus on proper training instead of banning a dog based upon his or her breed. I look forward to following your progress towards ending the ban. I'm always eager to do whatever is needed to help ensure that families not just need to provide loving homes to all dogs. Cerely, Meredith Pladdle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jill, for taking the time tonight to provide comments, and thank you for sharing the letter as well. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Jay, thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not seeing any of the requests for public comment.
Okay, well, then we will close our public comment period and move on. We do have a ceremonial presentation this evening, and this one is really going to hit close to all of our hearts. Tonight, I'm really honored to recognize Skyridge Medical Center and during this nationally, and read their proclamation honoring them for their good work. So during this nationally recognized Hospital Week 2021, the City of Lone Tree celebrates the healthcare heroes of Skyridge Medical Center for their outstanding care, commitment, and concern during the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic of 2020 that's still continuing. Whereas, the city council of the City of Lone Tree wishes to express appreciation for those who made incredible sacrifices in the fight against the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas city council is grateful to those who kept our community's strength, health, and well-being foremost in their hearts, and whereas city council thanks every member of the Skyridge healthcare team for caring for more than 900 COVID patients over the past year, and whereas city council appreciates the sacrifices the Skyridge healthcare workers made as they left their own families and loved ones to care for and comfort the sick and dying, and whereas city council acknowledges the vigilance Skyridge Medical Center undertook to keep the hospital clean and safe to reassure those who still required emergency care, and whereas city council salutes the Skyridge team for helping bring new life into this world safely during a global pandemic, and whereas city council applauds the Skyridge team for administering thousands of COVID-19 vaccines to keep our community safe and help end the pandemic. Therefore, I, Jackie Malley, Mayor of the City of Lone Tree, do hereby honor and extend our deepest thanks and gratitude to the healthcare workers at Skyridge Medical Center for their heroic efforts, and recognize the spirit, love, and healing touch provided to our community during the COVID-19 pandemic, and further, I encourage all residents of the City of Lone Tree to acknowledge our healthcare workers for their devotion to the health and well-being of our citizens. And in addition to these formal comments, I think I also must share that family members of every council member, with the exception of one, and we're thrilled that, that one escaped it, were provided with excellent care unrelated to COVID and lifesaving care for my husband in particular. So Skyridge holds a near and dear place in our hearts, and we thank them and everyone who works in and around that facility for really the amazing contributions and sacrifices over the course of the last year-plus of this pandemic. So thank them. If you hug, hug a healthcare worker and get a vaccine, everybody. That's my final comments on that. So now, in addition, I've got some announcements for upcoming events. In addition to the fact you can actually still get a vaccine at Skyridge Medical Center right now. You do have to sign up, though. So the COVID community testing is still happening at our campus credit union every day from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Visit the City of Lone Tree website for more information. Again, that's cityoflone tree dot com. Health One COVID Community Immunization operated by COVID Check Colorado is happening Wednesday through Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Charles Schwab parking lot in Lone Tree. Visit healthonecares dot com for more information. We're having our next community blood drive Wednesday, May 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:45 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center Event Hall. Visit our city website for more information on that. Again, this, I'm going to pause to, again, give a huge shout out to the staff at the Lone Tree Arts Center, who really have pivoted. And in addition to providing great opportunities for council to have our virtual meetings, they've also been a great place of care and gathering during the COVID, and these community blood drives are just one more example of the commitment that they have to serving the citizens of Lone Tree. So, but they're getting back to business. They're getting back to the business of arts, and more information can be found at thelone treartscenter.org. But I'm very excited to share a couple of things that are happening live and in our building. So An Evening with Gerald Albright, Saturday, May 15th, at 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center main stage. We cannot wait to see you there, and we're also live streaming that. There's also Passport to Culture and Sensory Friendly Yokus, a Japanese cultural mixed tape, is happening Sunday, May 16th, at 1:30 and 4:00 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center main stage. Again, so excited for our, our return back to the way things used to be, and our huge thanks to the great staff, the Lone Tree Arts Center, and the interim. So that concludes my announcements, but let's move on to a consent agenda, which includes the minutes of our April 20th regular meeting and claims for the period of April 13th to April 26th of 2021. I'll look for a motion on consent.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the public works portion of our agenda this evening, we've got the, a couple, we've got a couple awards of contracts. We're getting back to business here. Award of the Design Contract for the C-470 Trail over the Acres Green Bike Pedestrian Bridge Project, and Jacob James, our city engineer, is going to lead us through that. And this is a, this is a project a lot of folks have been asking for, for a long time. So we're just going to deliver. I'm happy to hear it.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The item you have before you to, this evening is consideration of a design contract for the Acres Green Bike Pedestrian Bridge over, or the C-470 Trail over Acres Green. Slide, please. Just a quick recap for council. I know that we talked about this a few, our last council meeting, but the design is a grade-separated trail to improve the bike and pedestrian safety at the crossing with Acres Green. In addition, this project will design a signal at the intersection for vehicle and pedestrian improved mobility at that location as well. The, the project is in the 2021 approved budget for capital improvements with the city, and it will support the 2022 Dr. Cog funded TIP construction project at this intersection. Again, council did approve an IGA with Douglas County on the April 20th council meeting, codifying the funding mechanism for this, with the city contributing $150,000 and Douglas County contributing $225,000. The design process, or the RFP process for this was, city staff was able to use the Douglas County on-call consultant list to shortlist consultants for this proposal based on their structures on-call. Based on that, four proposals were received by RS&amp;H, Wilson &amp; Company, Rocksal, and Alfred Benish &amp; Company. The proposal evaluation process consisted of city staff and Douglas County staff reviewing the proposals, and they were, it was kind of a two-part review, but the first review was firm qualifications, relevant experience, the project understanding, and the firm's approach to this project. It was very evident, all four firms were very highly qualified, so really no going wrong with any of them. And then the second part of the proposal was looking at their costs. So we combined everything, ranked and scored them, and came up with our proposed selection. So the selection committee did recommend Wilson &amp; Company to be selected for this design contract, and the basis of that recommendation was their extensive experience with this type of project with bridges, their local familiarity along the C-470 corridor, and in particular, they're the design engineer for the Yosemite Bridge that the county will deliver hopefully this year, and they're experienced also with the TIP process and the environmental clearance process, which is very important through the, through the federalized portion of this, or the state funding as well. And their cost was within the approved budget. So the next steps, if council approves the design contract tonight, we will start the, the design late this, this month. Environmental permitting and clearance would be expected to be done by the fourth quarter of this year. Design complete first quarter of next year, and then moving straight into construction next year as well. One thing of note for the construction portion of the funding, we will be bringing another IGA to council, bringing in the TIP fund portion of the, the project for, for funds. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on this project? Jay?
Yeah, it's, it's a well-needed project for sure. One question, I know you alluded to Douglas County being close. I know there's some easement issues regarding the Yosemite Bridge. I'm just worried about connectivity. Well, everything's going to be excellent except for right, right in the heart of Lone Tree there. Have you heard anything from, from Art or from Douglas County in general in terms of timing potentially? Because I know it came up in a Park Meadows Metro District meeting, and they weren't sure as to where that stood.
Sure, yeah. The county is actively pursuing acquiring the land needed, and it sounded like as early as next month, there would be some resolution to that. So they're, they're hoping after June, they would have resolution to acquiring the land they need to build that project.
Okay, great.
Yes.
And just to be clear, that's the project down by
I know.
At Home Site. No, I just want to make
I know, yeah, yeah.
Not, not, anybody that might be listening
Right.
That this is, we're talking about not this specific site, but the continuation of this, so the next, the next step in this project, so, which is, I think, really important as well. Okay. Any, any other questions? If not, I will look for a motion.
I move to approve the design contract for pre-construction activities related to the C-470 Trail over Acres Green Bike Pedestrian Bridge Project with Wilson &amp; Company at a cost not to exceed $375,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract, subject to changes approved by the city attorney that do not materially increase the obligations to the city.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jacob. We look forward to seeing the design. All right. Next up, we've got an award of construction contract for County Line and Yosemite Traffic Signal Project, and Ronnie Roy, our project engineer, is going to present this one. Welcome, Ronnie.
Thank you, Mayor Malley and members of the city council. Very excited to be here today to present the County Line and Yosemite Traffic Signal bids and hopefully award this contract. So can we go ahead and move the slide? Thanks. So, yeah, we're looking here at County, yeah, County Line in Yosemite. You can see it's a span wire, looking to upgrade that to mast alarm signal. We've got some intersection, the corners there, going to need some ADA ramp improvements. Right now, we're showing directional ramps and, or I'm sorry, right now, they are diagonal, and we'll be upgrading those to directional to meet ADA requirements, pro-egg, and all the governing policies on, on those crossings. Can you go ahead and change the slide? So our ad date, we put this thing out for advertisement on 3/28/2021 and closed on 4/12. We received four bids, and we're able to, you know, analyze all those bids, and, you know, they all met the conformant standards, and we were able to analyze them based on price. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, KCI, Nora, Sturgeon, and TechCon all bid the project, and we're all qualified bidders. But as you can see, TechCon came in at 5.29, 4.28, 62 cents. So, yeah, they're, they're the apparent low bidder. So we went ahead and went through all the, you know, just basically checked all their references and looked for some previous projects that they were involved in, and things looked good. So, yeah, TechCon was our low bidder. I was able to contact a, a, he was a project engineer for Region 5 at CDOT, and got some good feedback on, you know, their work ethic and the quality of their work. Also was able to contact the CDOT headquarters and got their last rating for their signal project, and 14 out of 15 is pretty good. Still considered a high B in those standards, but, yeah, very, very good by, you know, any, any.
Ronnie, you're going to work with them and get them up to an A.
That's right. Yeah, no, I've heard really good things about this contractor. You know, they actually did another project on, was it US 40 going into I7, yeah, going into I-70, and they did a ramp meter project, and, yeah, the project engineer also there had nothing but great things to say about them. So looking forward to, yeah, building a relationship for the city and, yeah, having a successful project. Next slide, please. So, yeah, here, the, the approved budget, $711,000, was approved previously. The design wasn't included in this, this figure because it was done in a previous budget year, but we've already purchased the polls. There you can see 132,000 for the polls. There's the bid there, 529,000, $428.62. We're going to throw in 5,000 for testing, and that's, you know, basically for concrete, things like that, and the, is our total budget there, and, you know, we have a 44,000 contingency budget, just in case anything goes wrong. This is a pretty smooth project. I don't anticipate anything crazy to happen, so I think we're in good shape. Next slide. Thanks. So, yeah, as far as public outreach goes, you know, we're going to work with the HOAs, including residents, and then the Park Meadows Metro District, kind of to let them know what our schedule is, you know, when we're going to start. And, you know, the, the big thing is the lane closures, because that really affects some of the businesses. So, yeah, we're going to try to minimize the impacts, but, yeah, we'll definitely let them know. And, you know, one of the ways that we always like to notify everyone with the VMS board at least one week before construction, just to let them know, you know, we're going to be out there. And we'll be, you know, utilizing social media and the project website, which is already up on our, on the Lone Tree website now, and timber lines. Looking forward to using that as well. So, yeah, if there's any questions, please feel free.
Ronnie, when's the contract expected to start and, excuse me, the work expected to start?
You know, Ed at TechCon, he's, he's ready to go. So, you know, after this meeting, we're going to look to do a notice of award and probably get that contract going. I would think it can get up going, up and running in a month.
I guess I just want to make sure we're in communication with, there's a lot happening, you know, with In-N-Out and with the mall and everything else, and I think there are better, how long is this project expected to take?
Well, we're not going to get polls till June 6th, so, you know, that's probably going to be the last piece.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a 90-day contract, but it's not going to take that long.
Yeah, I guess I just want to, if there are better workdays and hours for the mall traffic, Seth, I just, you know, I don't need to repeat it, but, I mean, that's a, it's just a high visible profile area. So we want to obviously minimize disruption and coordination with Park Meadows to make sure there not some special event happening the day we're starting our construction project. So just all of those type of things, I just want to make sure we're, we're cognizant of. But this looks like a really great contract. Any questions from council? Yeah, Jay?
Just, do we, do we feel pretty confident that the polls will actually be here on the 6th of June? Because I know supply chain's pretty disrupted right now.
Yeah, I confirmed with MH Lighting two weeks ago, and, yeah, they verified everything's up to date, and they're, they want to deliver it on June 6th. up to date and they want to deliver it on June 6th.
In tempo.
Anything else from council? All right, we'll look for, we'll look for the motion.
I move to approve the contract with TechCon Infrastructure LLC in the amount of $529,428.62 for the South Yosemite and County Line Road Signal, an ADA ramp replacement project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents subject to changes approved by the city attorney that do not materially increase the obligations of the city.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Ronnie, you've got one more for us. Award of contract, construction contract for Crooked Stick Trail, Street Widening and Overlay Phase 2. And again, council was briefed on this in our study session, so looking forward to getting this one out the door, too.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again. So, yeah, this, this Crooked Stick Widening is part of, you know, a larger project. It sounds like some funding ran short in the previous phase, so, you know, we're looking to, basically it's a mill and fill. We're going to overlay this section of the road, which definitely needs it. There's some subsurface issues that we're going to have to address, so there's going to be a couple of areas there where we're going to actually have to do a full depth replacement and get some R-50 material in and some good testing. Yeah, we'll have a great product overall. And then additionally, we wanted to add some parking into that section. So again, this is the same dates, 3/28, the project went to add and then closed on 4/12. Got three bids on this one and, again, we checked all the requirements there. Had to, I think this one here, we actually had to correct bid, one of them missed, the, it's a standard force account item, $20,000, that I wanted to make sure every bidder included, so that was one thing we had to fix. Go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, Chavez, Elisco and TechCon, all were applicable bidders and Chavez Construction came out on top or below, however you see it, $277,642. And, yeah, go ahead, move to the next one. So, you know, I had to do some reference checks on these guys as well. I'm not familiar with them, so I was able to kind of lean on the experience in our office, kind of brought on, let me know if the 2018 overlay project, the Ribs Gate Parkway Crosswalk Improvement Project, and then the Phase 1 of this job was also done by Chavez Construction. So they have a successful track record in the city, which I think will carry on into this phase as well. So the approved budget, yeah, $350,000. Again, this design was in a previous budget year, so we didn't have to take that into account. The bid, $277,642 plus testing, testing is going to be a very important portion of this phase, got to make sure we get the water, the moisture content and the 95%, 95% compaction rating for the subsurface. That'll give us a nice solid base to kind of do our overlay on. And then 282,642 is our total budget and we have some nice contingency in here just in case anything goes wrong. Kind of anticipating there might be a little extra of subsurface work in this area based on, you know, what I've seen in the field. Move to the next slide. So again, yeah, we're going to kind of lean on the HOAs to notify residents of, you know, our schedule, which includes, you know, our start and finish dates and any closures. And there might be a possible detour depending on how things turn out, but we'll always, you know, make sure we have access one way or another to all parts of the subdivision. And then again, we used VMS signs one week before construction activities and that was something we had to include in additional to our lump sum traffic control item because this has to go out actually a week before we officially start work. And then, yeah, also, you know, again, social media, project websites and timber line will be utilizing this project as well. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think my only question or comment is if there's going to be a detour, obviously we want to get that information out as soon as possible, just so people can plan their journeys, especially if the, I know during study session, it was mentioned that the project potentially could be finished up in October of 2021. That's a school bus route, the school buses are there on that street, so any detour that happens after August would impact our school buses. We want to make sure we're working with our partners at Douglas County Schools as well to let them know about that. So that's what all I had. Is anything else from council? We talked about it. You didn't get to hear it all, Ronnie, but we gave Justin a bunch of tips already on this one. But, all right, not seeing anything else. There it goes, there's the motion.
I move to approve the contract with Chavez Construction Incorporated in the amount of $277,642 for the Crooked Stick Widening Phase 2 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents subject to changes approved by the city attorney that do not materially increase the obligations of the city.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ronnie. You're going to be busy this summer.
Thank you, we're going to work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, all right. Next up, we've got administrative matters, ordinance 21-06, an ordinance approving and ratifying lease agreements and amendments and extensions at the Lone Tree Municipal Building on first reading, and our city attorney Linda Michau is going to lead us in that one.
Mayor and city council, thank you for the opportunity to present 21-06, an ordinance relating to your leases of suites within the municipal office building. Next slide, please. So under the city's Home Rule Charter, Article 16, Section 3, any lease of city property for a period of more than a year must be adopted by ordinance, and that's why we're here this evening. The city leases suites within the building of various lengths of time periods, most of which do exceed the one-year threshold. And these leases are typically amended, extended and assigned on a fairly routine basis for various reasons. Next slide. So the proposed ordinance would approve and ratify existing leases for Suites 140, 175, Suite 230, 240 and the executive suites within Suite 270 that have been recently subdivided. The ordinance would also authorize lease extensions, excuse me, and amendments to those leases and then authorizing the city manager to sign those extensions. And then finally, the ordinance proposes to authorize the future leasing of Suite 230 to the current tenant who only signed a six-month lease and is interested in further extending that for another five-year period, as well as a new lease for approximately 500 square feet of space within the executive suites of Suite 270. And again, as I mentioned in your study session, there are parameters around which those future leases that the city staff would be directed to stay within in terms of authorizing the city manager to sign those. Next slide, please. And I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any city council questions. I know Justin Russell presented to you more specifically the terms of the leases and the suites that the city is currently leasing, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Thanks, and I know we asked you a lot during study session, but I'll make sure there's not anything else that has arisen since then. Any questions from council? No, all right. I think, I want to reiterate though, that and information the city manager shared with us and just the foresight from our earlier councils to purchase this building and Seth, what did you say, $2.5 million in rent that the city has received since we purchased that building? And I just think it's, again, a great story of collaboration and partnership and foresight with our city councils. So thanks for the opportunity and thanks for raising that. This, you know, during COVID, $170,000 was no small thing and it really mattered. So I think it's really, again, a very wise decision by a future, by a former council. So with that.
I move to adopt ordinance 21-06, an ordinance approving and ratifying lease agreements and amendments and extensions at Lone Tree Municipal Building on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, and the last item on our formal agenda, last but not least, Jeff Hallwell, Director of Economic Development and Public Affairs, the busiest man during the legislative session. It's Resolution 21-26, a resolution appointing Lori Conrad to the Board of Directors of the Lone Tree Business Improvement District. Jeff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The Resolution 21-26 appoints a new member to the Lone Tree Business Improvement District, but not a new business. The same business has held a seat since its inception, TCF Bank, and a promotion has been made on staff requiring or, you know, allowing for Lori Conrad to be appointed as a new member of the bid. So, next slide, please. In a quick summary, TCF Bank has been a long-term member of the Lone Tree bid. Lori Conrad joined the bank several years ago, but is now leading the institution just south of the 711 or north of the Panera Bread Building and Resolution 21-26 would appoint her to the board. Next slide. And the suggested motion is attached.
Well, you must congratulate Lori on behalf of council for her promotion. That's always awesome to hear people moving up. So with that, I'll look for the motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-26, a resolution appointing Lori Conrad to the Board of Directors of the Lone Tree Business Improvement District.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to council's favorite portion, council comments. We are going to start this evening with Jay.
All right, so last Monday night, we had the Outstanding Youth of Douglas County Award Ceremony. Felt a little different this year, being virtual, obviously, and we did a little different format in terms of we did some outreach to each principal of the various schools in Douglas County, including charters, and we had them and their staff select who was most deserving of the award and some great stories of resilience and overcoming adversity. We actually had the new permanent superintendent, Corey Wise, was on it as well and presenting it. And so all in all, great night and I appreciate council member Anderson was there as well to participate. So that was kind of the highlight of the past week for me.
Those are always really special and I'm sure, I know you're looking forward to next year when they're in person.
Yes, for sure.
All right, council member Anderson, thanks for participating. And what's been going on with you? What are your comments?
I'd like to acknowledge Jay's leadership in that effort. It really is an outstanding activity to recognize people that might not otherwise be recognized. It's a great example of how people in Douglas County and in Lone Tree step up to make sure that everybody's included in the opportunities and the benefits of our communities. Secondly, I'd just like to, on the youth initiative, I'd also like to acknowledge the night they had to raise money at Cronelli's. The food was great that night.
Good deal.
I don't know how much money they raised, but thank the youth commission for organizing that effort and for their efforts to help out with food banks and the families that are in need of food here in the community. And thirdly, you know, over time, I've really come to appreciate Denise's efforts in terms of the timber line and the nose out to the HOA. I think we're really doing an outstanding job of trying to get the word out on what's going on, the opportunities for our citizens to participate and to know about what's going on in the community. So please thank Denise for everything she's doing to keep everybody informed.
Thanks, Mike. All right, Wynne.
I think my theme for this evening is getting back to normal. So I'm really, really glad that next time we meet, we'll be in council chambers. I will say, I attended a meeting this morning in the tech center and normally we would have had four people in this conference room. We had 12 and it was wonderful. I just walked in and felt like, oh my goodness, there are people here in this room. It was delightful. And on the way home, I saw they're working on Lincoln Avenue with the curb and gutter and it, again, felt like a very normal occurrence, so I'm grateful we're getting back to normal.
Yeah, absolutely. Well said. Ms. Brunick, Mayor Protemba.
So I've been spending most of my city-based time with CMO. Lots going on in legislature as Jeff keeps this all up to date. We've had a number of additional meetings and just wanted to encourage all the city folks to go out and attend the CMO Special Conference that's been moved unfortunately out of where it was planned, which was going to be very lovely to Westminster, which will be equally as lovely, I'm sure, but not as much fun unfortunately to travel out of town. So that is, again, September 22nd through 24th. I will be running for the executive board again and certainly appreciate the support of the council here and our other elected officials in Douglas County for that. So, and I'll just follow up on what Mike said, the HOA announcements have been especially good lately. I was walking in the neighborhood the other day and I know that Heritage Hills where I live immediately repurposes them and sends them to all the residents. And I had several people stop me after this last one and thank us for the work that we're doing to make sure people are informed right now. So I think because of some of the isolation, the fact that people aren't out, that that communication has been especially good. So just, I would add on with Mike's comments and just say I really appreciate your work there. That's it.
I think it's important that we are a trusted source and I think, Mike, you're right on Denise has done a great job, particularly with the HOA outreach. It has become a trusted source and when people know they can rely and count on it, they look for it. So I think, I hate to admit, I was like reminded myself when I get that, I'm like, oh yeah, that is happening. So she keeps council informed as well. I want to acknowledge, and I thought for sure, I wasn't even going to get to mention it, so excited about our new piece of art, our temporary art display out in front. It's so much has happened in the evening, we already forgot about it, but council joined at 3:30 this afternoon with our awesome staff and the sculpture, two artists who temporarily have created actually for this specific spot in Lone Tree, this outstanding piece that I will not pronounce correctly, so Tuono? Tuono. I would encourage everyone to come take a look. I think it's going to be the new best selfie spot in the city of Lone Tree. The juxtaposition of that piece with the roof line of this art center is simply magnificent and we are so grateful to our Lone Tree Arts Commission for their good work in bringing that project forth. Again, it was something that was delayed in COVID, which makes its appearance on our lawn even that much sweeter. So as we go about our business, as we return to normal, as we wait behind school buses, as there is a little bit longer line at the drive-through, as there are more people in the grocery stores, I for one am happy about it. And I think there, you know, I think we take for granted a lot of times the things that we've been able to do without thinking twice and I am looking forward to those days returning. I want to say thanks to my great members on council and our staff for really the great work. And again, goodbye and thank you to our tremendous Lone Tree Arts Center staff. I don't think I can say it enough. This year would not have been possible, we would not have been able to do as much as we have been able to do as a council without them. So with that, we're adjourned. Go look at the art.